Ready?
Okay.
Good evening.
Five minutes to be.
Five in the back, plus a year.
I'm gonna call the Free Town Board of Selectmen's meeting to order at 6:10.
I'm gonna call the Free Town Lakeville Regional School Committee to order at 6:10. All members present except for Mr. Kulikovich who will be late.
The Free Town-
Oh, and Mr. Brown, too.
Free Town Finance Committee is here. They're actually already in session because they're dealing with a transfer request that should be coming up in a minute. And we're missing one selectman.
Right, the Lakeville Selectmen, Scott Bellview is running half all day. He called Aaron Sworn, a stack of bibles he has been behind before, six years and here. So when he comes, Christine will just call the Selectmen to order when Aaron comes.
Here comes our Finance Committee now. And once they get seated, we'll go around the table and hopefully everybody will introduce each other or introduce themselves to each other.
That's what I said.
This was the making course.
Yeah.
Okay. Let him go around the table before we turn this over to Dr. Nash. She's gonna give us a rundown of what she's looking for for a budget. My name is Paul Tadek. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen in Free Town.
Lisa Pacheco, Board of Selectmen.
George Lahopolis, Lakeville Finance Committee.
Avnogera, Regional School Committee.
Dave Baker, School Committee.
Fred Baker, Director of Finance for the School Department.
Chris Nash, interim Superintendent.
Carolyn Gordon, School Committee.
Paul Clark, School Committee.
Dave Dabney, Board of School.
Mike Patruzzo, Lakeville Finance Committee.
Ted Bun, Lakeville Finance Committee.
John Pavil, Lakeville Selectmen.
Donna Winters, Lakeville Finance Committee.
Maureen Candido, Lakeville Finance.
Ken Wilkins, Free Town Finance.
Ryan Fivert, Chairman, Free Town Finance.
Paul Ball, Free Town Finance.
Paul Ball, Free Town Finance.
Richard Brown, Town Administrator, Free Town.
Okay, one other thing. We've got two cameras, I guess, Lake Cam and Middleborough, taking audio and video tonight. I'm taping audio. Is there anybody else here taping the meeting?
Matt from Middleborough is up.
Okay, anybody else?
John Garcia, same time.
All right. We have one more member of our Finance Committee that just came in. Phil?
Yep.
Just introduce yourself, please.
Phil Falls, Rannell, Finance Committee, Free Town.
All right, with that, I'm gonna turn this part of the meeting over to Dr. Nash, who's gonna tell us what the plan is for fiscal year '15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, just, I'd like to thank everyone for coming together. I think this is certainly probably a first for me to have this many people sitting at a meeting, so I appreciate the fact that all of you are here to listen to a abbreviated presentation. We started the budget process last fall. I believe we followed you the PowerPoint for a public hearing that will occur on Wednesday. And that really goes into a lot more detail than I'm going to go into this evening. And certainly you can ask questions on that if any of you have those questions this evening. The school committee in January received a preliminary presentation from the administrators and I with respect to the FY '15 budget request. Prior to that, in middle to late fall, we had asked for some directive from our school committee as to the building of our budget and whether that budget, whether their request was for us to build a budget that would be a level-funded budget, a reduction budget, level funded, level services, or an additional needs budget. Obviously, when you build a level-funded budget, it is a reduction budget. At that top point in time, the school committee asked us not to develop a budget that would recognize a reduction in services. And so we presented to the school committee, and you have a summary of that this evening in the handout that I gave you, we presented to the school committee, a budget that really reflects three levels. The first level is what we call our minimum level services budget. And simply stated, it's a budget that simply covers our contractual obligations and any other obligations that we have regarding contracts. And I provided that to you, and that's summarized for you. So that would cover our teacher salaries, our teachers are in the last year of their contract, that would cover their STEPS and their COLA, it would cover our other personnel who are non-union, and our other unions that are not teachers, teachers' unions. It would also cover some of our contractual obligations around retirement, around transportation, sped tuitions, and sped contracted services. One of the things that you'll note, if you look at the figure for sped tuition, you'll see that that represents $764,000. That's above and beyond the budget for FY '14, which was about $1,296,000. That represents real tuition for real students, so it's not a projection. So it's based on students that we currently know that we have in the system and the costs that we anticipate we will see for next year for those tuitions. So that increase, above and beyond the $32,688,515, which was the FY '14 figure, is an additional The school committee and I certainly recognize the difficulty in trying to continually fund budgets when we're all fighting for the same amount of money. This is the minimum. This represents for us covering our contractual obligations. It does not look at staffing, it does not add staff. Neither this budget nor the recommended level services budget address staffing needs. I want to make that very clear. So you're not looking at, in the first two levels of budget, any additional new positions. Positions that come about because of reorganization, of positions because we trade in, if you will, staff and create a different way of providing our services are not new positions. They are positions that we currently have, and they're funded in our budget. The school committee also received a budget that presented what we called our recommended level services. We wanted to look at areas in the budget that typically present challenges for us to fund. And again, these areas are not areas that cover new staff, they're not personnel, but they're areas that, as I met with the administrators and when we worked through the budget process, we recognized either had been underfunded or were not adequate in meeting the needs of our students. You'll see a large sum of money, $121,000, for instructional supplies and text. When each of the principals presented their budgets to us and we met with them individually, there were a range of needs based on, again, the buildings, the age of textbooks, the resources that they needed. So all of that, that sum that you see represents instructional supplies, textbooks, workbooks, and those kinds of things for K-12. We're looking at that. Not a lot of money when you look at a typical high school textbook ranging anywhere from $65,000 to $125,000 per book. So it doesn't buy you a lot. The high school's cost of this was $48,000, and a lot of it was for replacements of books, or outdated texts. It wasn't making wholesale purchases for new texts. It was really keeping us abreast and keeping us ahead of and updated with the number of texts that we need for the students who are in courses. Professional development is represented by the word PD. We call it PD. Again, it's an acronym for professional development. It includes some additional funding above and beyond what we had in the budget for last year, and so we're looking for an additional $50,000. Part of that deals with some of the new initiatives that many of you hear us talk about. It deals with the new teacher evaluation system and the requirement for teachers to develop on what we call district-determined measures. The curriculum articulation that needs to happen, whether or not you are a fan of the Common Core. The Common Core is the instituted, and we're trying to align it, and that came about in 2010 in ELA and math. So we will continue with that. Also, ELL training, English Language Learner training. We are Level III district, and we'll have to be required to go through some training for all staff who come in contact with any student who's an English learner. So there are all kinds of costs, and when we looked at that, we felt that we needed to add some money in professional development. Technology hardware is to continue with some of the purchasing that we already did this year. The school committee had authorized us to be able to spend some money for carts of Chromebooks that we are using and have been using as recently as last week and this week and in the next month or so for PAR testing. You overall, I believe, spent a little over $900,000 and authorized that and restructured debt for the schools to upgrade their infrastructure. It did not upgrade technology. It upgraded the potential for that, but it did not upgrade technology across the district, or whatever devices that you might think of as being technology. So that was one of the things that we were looking at. It's not a large sum of money. It will allow us to move forward. Most recently, some of you probably read in the newspaper that we were very lucky that the Free Town Elementary School received a $30,000 grant to buy some technology. Someone had asked me in Lakeville, why not Lakeville? Because the grant only, it's a greater fall river grant, and the town of Lakeville does not fall into, I believe, Bristol County, so that was the reason why. But we hope, obviously, to try to down the road, bring the equity. The issue is always equity across our district. So when we look at both elementary schools, that's one of the concerns that we have, and also as we move up. So that brings the subtotal to $211,000 as part of our recommended level services. We also talked about maintenance. This figure that you see is not a lot. It puts money back directly in each of the line items for each of our buildings. We saw that we were overspending those, that in the past, your budget was always overspending in those areas. So approximately, I think, puts back about $35,000 to $4,000 at the building level for things that we already spent. Really just minor maintenance of the building that you would come up with. It's not a large sum of money. And then one of the things that the next figure does is to start continuing to look at the security needs assessment that was done in the district, and how do we continue to address the long list of security upgrades that had been recommended in the needs assessment process that was done in the district a few years ago. $75,000 will not do all of it, but it continues to get us to move forward along that line. Certain things like cameras and gates and security glass and all those kinds of things that we've been talking about that were in the long list. The other piece that you'll see is $65,000 for legal. When I came into the district, one of the things that I saw right away was the fact that the legal line item in this district was extremely low. It had no line item for sped, thus it all came out of the general legal and would make it a little bit more difficult at times potentially to take on some of those cases that you should challenge. So one thing that will happen next year is the committee will start in negotiations for teachers' contracts. So $65,000 is a number you're gonna spend anyway. It's gonna come out of the budget, no matter where it comes, so we thought it would be important to put the appropriate line item in there. That will add to the $26,000 that currently exist in the budget. The FY '14 figure, I believe, was a little over $26,000, so that would bring that line item to a little over $90,000. It may seem like a lot of money to you, but I can tell you as a veteran superintendent, it is not a lot of money in the course of the actions that you take on a day-to-day basis in the school district and to have legal counsel to make sure that you're making appropriate decisions in compliance with contract issues and other types of issues not atypical. That simply added together with the recommended, recommended and minimum brings us to $1,73889. And that's really what we're seeking. We're seeking to try to have both towns support a budget that represents the recommended level services. Do you want me to stop there? Are there any questions? Do you want me to continue with the potential offsets?
Because what you're showing us is the $34,419,404, which applies to a 5.25% increase.
Right.
Then you have some additional items, right?
Yes. So what you're looking at is a level services minimum plus recommended cost of $34,419,404. One of the things that we struggled with is the potential of what offsets could we do, knowing that last year certainly towns supported the budget on both ends. And when Fred and I spoke, the Director of Finance and I spoke about what do we have that we potentially could use to offset? We wanted to make sure that we were able to, one, recognize that some of these are ongoing offsets, such as circuit breaker, but others of these are potentially one-time offsets. So in some ways, it kicks the ball down the road, if you will. It kicks the can down the road, as they say. But I wanted to talk about those and explain those. First and foremost, at the very top, under minimum level services, you're gonna see an adjustment there. It says $294,069, and you'll see that we took that off as a negative. One of the things in this year's budget that we faced when we came on board was that the FY '14 budget had some new positions. Many of them were warranted positions, like parent interventionist, department heads restructured, those kinds of positions, technology integrators, people who could support technology in classrooms. But as we looked at the special ed budget, we saw that some of the services weren't being met in accordance with the individual IEPs for students. And thus, we really had to peg away at that money. And simply put, we had to use about $250,000 to $300,000 of the $517,000 that had been part of the new monies for FY '14 for these new positions. At that point in time, and that was around October, I went to the school committee and said, "I could move forward and try to fill some of these positions. Obviously, I can't fill all of them." But the unknown is, I don't know what's gonna happen with the sped budget, since at this point in time, we had to recall a lot of people because parent positions and one-on-ones weren't being met. We decided, the school committee voted not to move forward with any of those new positions. So that meant that we had money in the budget, around $300,000, that had been earmarked for these new positions, because we'd spent about $200,000, $250,000 of it, that was still there. That's where that offset comes. That's $294,000 in this year's budget that we can use to offset that cost. Going forward, when we built the budget moving forward, we did not reduce the budget by that amount. So the $32,688,515 was used as the foundation to build our budget. So that's why, when we look at the potential offsets, you'll see end-of-year funds, anticipated FY '14. With that money, we'll pre-buy some of the things that we would use in FY '15, and that frees up that money. So we're looking at really a pool of money left this year, and then moving forward because the base of the budget didn't change, we have that money for next year, around $300,000. So that's where that money appears, and that's a question that people had asked. One, we have it sitting there now between now and the end of the year. Two, because we built the budget on the $32,688,515 and didn't reduce it by the money that we didn't spend for those positions we're applying at, in essence, for next year. The other two areas that we talk about, one is circuit breaker. Circuit breaker is money that school districts get. There's a good and a bad to circuit breaker. It's money you get for extraordinary costs in sped, above and beyond $39,000 per student. And you get a percentage of that back. Our circuit breaker has run, on average, the last year, around $420,000. And it is not atypical for school districts to use some of circuit breaker to offset their sped tuition. And that's what we will do. But we are not using all of it. We're using $300,000, that's our recommendation to the school committee, and not the $400,000, because it is not atypical for any of us in education to recognize that, come next year, we could easily get a sped cost that is not in our budget as a result of a settlement, a move-in, or an IEP that changes, that can run you anywhere from $35,000 to $150,000 without transportation. So we wanted to set aside at least $1,000 of that circuit breaker. In addition, we did create a one, what we call a one placement in our budget for some additional money, because we know that that's going to happen. So we created a spot, if you will, that will get filled easily with some additional funds. And then the third piece of a potential offset is what we call our excess and deficiency account. So school districts, and particularly years ago, regional school districts were allowed, before public school districts, if you will, only regional school districts were allowed many years ago, to set aside 5% of their operational budget. And primarily, it was because in multiple school districts, it would be very difficult during the course of a year to go back to all of your stakeholders. This is a two-member district, it's a little bit easier, but in five, six, seven, eight-member districts, it's more difficult. Now, any school can set aside 5% of your budget. Typically, I think Fred told me that the E&amp;D account in this town, in this region, was as low as, was it 600?
As low as 500.
500, and as high as maybe $1,004,000. So currently, we have, I think-
Well, we have $1,001,000 presently.
So we're looking at saying that we would take $300,000 out of that to offset. Again, this is really one-time money. We had some extraordinary costs or events that would happen, particularly with facilities and that, oftentimes, this is used that way. It's not used to sustain a budget in the sense of hiring a personnel typically, and it can't be used that way, but it can be used for some of these other things. So we can, excuse me, set aside, and our recommendation, about $900,000 to offset the total cost to both towns of the budget, the increase that we're looking for. So when you look at that factored in, you'll see that the net, as a result of the $900,000 offset, is a 2.54% increase overall if the towns were to support the level services recommended budget, which is what I believe the school committee and we feel as the administrators is the minimum that we would like supported, so.
So Dr. Nash, if I understand this correctly, you're pretty certain that you are gonna use a $900,000 offset?
Well, I'm recommending that to the school committee, so I haven't heard them say anything negative to that at this point, since the time that we brought it forward, which was at our January, I think, 11th meeting. I don't know if the Chair or Vice Chair want to speak on that.
No, I've heard nothing from the committee that thinks that we do otherwise.
We're comfortable suggesting that, but we know that, you know, some of this is one-time, which is, again, kicking the can down the road for another year. But given the fact that there are some other things going on in the district in the transition and all of that, from superintendent interim to permanent, as well as teacher contracts and all of that, I think there's some opportunity, certainly, to look at some other areas as we move forward, or as this district moves forward.
Dr. Nash, the 2% wage increase for 2015, is that included in the STEPS and the cost of living?
Yes.
It's in those, okay. It's in those numbers.
The COLA represents your 2%, and the STEPS represent the other.
So when you talk to net figure of $33,519,404, that is the total cost less than $900,000 that you're gonna apply for? End of story.
End of story, yes. It also has some assumptions. This budget was built on assumptions, as we all do, and I think it's important, and I won't go over those for you, but I think they're important to recognize. We know preliminary figures are out for Chapter 70. They represent House II and the governor's figures, so that may certainly change. We're assuming that at least that would be level-funded. Any variation of that obviously impacts our budget. We're assuming, and we believe, that there will not see any dramatic increases in utilities, and therefore, thus far, we at least believe that, as we end this year, that that would be the case for next year. We are able to, based on what we know right now, cover our increases in health insurance based on the information from MYHA, for, within our budget. Part of it was because some of those individuals weren't hired this year, that were projected, and some of it is simply changes in plans and people not taking insurance, so that's a constant fluctuation. We also anticipate we won't get any major growth, population growth. We don't know. Last year, you heard us come back to the school committee, so have you, and add two teachers at Grace because of our class sizes. If you look at the PowerPoint that I am presenting on Wednesday evening, I address class size. We are making some internal transfers. Free Town's Elementary School has, happens to have one class that has a small number for next year, so we're able to make, and we have some retirements, so we're able to not take that position and move it over, is what a region does, to look at where you need it, move it over to our other elementary schools. So there are other kinds of things that can happen within your budget as a result of class sizes changing. Again, you want to look at that every year when you start making those decisions for class sizes and for workable numbers, if you will. Circuit breaker, again, we believe it will be level-funded. Our hope is, if that changes dramatically, then that would impact our budget, because we're looking at using $300,000 of the $400-plus thousand that we're going to get, so that would impact it. Gosh, I hope sped tuitions don't change anymore. At this point in time, I can tell you that as of last week, I have 2.5 parent positions that I'm adding for students. The good part is, we're bringing students back in, and that's why these positions are there. So that's good news. But also, it creates, obviously, an ability for someone to pick up health insurance and, obviously, a position in the district that we will need to sustain. And regional transportation, we hope, will be level-funded. I haven't heard any changes from the state as to whether that funding will remain the same or whether the percentage will increase. So those are some assumptions that we made in building the budget, and any change in any of those assumptions will dramatically impact our budget one way or the other, as you certainly see, obviously, when you see your own funding and numbers in each town.
Mr. McGurk, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
You're the chairman of the Regional Schools Committee. Your board, is it, can you give us what you're most likely to be looking at of the tuition area?
We're most likely looking at the $33,519,404, the 2.54% increase over last year. We feel that we've been fiscally, more fiscally responsible than ever before in the past and more transparent. When the towns granted us the override, we took a serious look, and that's why you saw us not fill positions that were budgeted in there. We wanted to make sure that we started to build sustainability in the budget going forward, so we're not creating this huge burden on the towns every year.
I'll open it up to anybody that wants to ask questions, that's sitting around on the stage.
I have a question. When we did the U-Ride, and, not us, because we need to do the U-Ride, you know when I need to go, right? Okay. We were, that was done on a premise that we were following some sort of educational plan of, you know, whatever that was. Now we're going in another direction, and soon enough, we'll have another superintendent who may be going in another direction. So what is this money gonna follow? What path are we going down? I think, you know, it's a little frustrating to sit on the side of the table and start to feel really good about something, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna backtrack and go into another direction. So I'm just wondering, like I asked last year, what is our money gonna buy us? What is the plan for you guys?
The plan is, if I may, to the Chair, the plan is the same plan that we have approved. We are gonna still look at restructuring and possibly redistricting the students to get better use out of our facilities next year, and with the teacher contracts, to continue what we have with putting technology integration in the classrooms and moving that whole plan forward.
What do you mean redistricting? You mean-
Well, we're gonna start looking at the use of the buildings and where students are to make sure we get the maximum use out of all the buildings. are to make sure we get the maximum use out of all the buildings. With bringing the new superintendent on board, we want to have a fresh look at that, you know, as far as, you know, is there an opportunity that we can possibly, you know, um, move students, you know, between the two towns, students that live closer to, um, Free Town, maybe go to Free Town Elementary, you know, share resources better between the two towns to try to get some equity at the elementary school.
Are we now talking about raising the salary?
No, we're not.
Can I, can I roll on, sir? Come, come up, oh. Is it, is it, anybody else?
Karen.
Karen, see the two.
Come up to the table.
Go ahead, because I'm a little bit still.
I appreciate it, but it's, I'm a fraud.
What we say we're over here for.
So the-
If anybody else wants to-
Maybe, uh- Are there more handouts? Do you get, I think they're all available at this point, I think.
Actually, I'd like to ask the question.
Wait, wait, she's going to follow up, one's was going to follow.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So you would ask, um, what does it get you? The minimum gets, gets you the fact that, that you're not, um, laying off staff other than through reorganization, and I want to be very clear about that. We are going to reorganize some positions, and that's not new staff. That means trading in some positions to get something else that's better, that we, we feel at this point in time we need. So that's what it gets you when you do a minimum. If you look at your budget, um, every year your budget goes up more than two and a half percent because eighty percent roughly of, of your budget is salary. So unless you can negotiate contracts that stay within that time, that frame, it's never going to happen. Um, so that's one thing. And then the other big piece is, of course, your health insurance, as those creases, increases go up. But the biggest piece of any budget are your employees, and your employees in the school department, um, by nature of their contracts, receive both, uh, a COLA, a cost of living, and they receive what they call a step. And those percentages can range anywhere from, um, a cost of living that could be one percent, two percent, up to seven, eight, nine, ten percent in some districts. Until you flatten out that scale and do something different, that's what it's going to be. And that's a serious discussion that you can have in negotiations. I can tell you that I did it in Hanover as superintendent of schools, and flattened out steps to a flat three percent overall, right? So, and it's something that districts are now doing. So that's one way to address this issue down the road, but it simply is going to get you, um, to keep staff, so that you're not, um, increasing class sizes. You can see the class sizes at elementary school, uh, and you want to be very cautious when you start looking at upper grades, because when you get into the high school, it's not driven by class sizes, by programs. It's very different in a high school level. Um, we've had some serious discussion about our high school program of studies. It does not meet the state's mass core graduation requirements, and in the next two or three years, hopefully, uh, Dr. Stocky will start to make some recommendations. Again, that does not mean that you necessarily add new staff. It doesn't, but you look at your entire district, your staffing, and see how that can move when you, when you're doing that. Uh, so that's what it's going to get you, and then the addition, the recommended is simply those very succinct line items, uh, that, that we have suggested need to happen.
Yeah, it's also important to note that we didn't start off by trying to change the plan. We basically had costs that were legally mandated, so once we filled the positions and took, took care of the costs that were mandated, the tuitions and the extra staff needed for students, at that point we began to look at the whole situation. So it wasn't a conscious effort to change the plan, it was to deal with what we had to deal with.
Well, some of the plan had to change because we couldn't get-
Well, it did, because we, we-
Because it would have had impact bargaining-
Yeah.
In, in those. So that's what I'm saying, like, that plan changed, and now you have, you have a new plan, and I just want to know-
The plan didn't get carried forward at that point.
Right.
One, because we had increases in positions that we needed to call back for around sped, and two, because some of those things had not been impact bargaining, but it doesn't mean that the plan was not a good plan. I mean, those posi-, none of the recommendations in that plan are anything that I would not have supported if I was sitting here as superintendent. It simply is that we had to put it on hold, and you're not seeing that addressed. I have not shown you the additional needs budget, which brings it up to over two million increase, which I would love to share with you, but starts to attack the staffing issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nash. Can we go to the last question? I just want to make it known that, uh, we're missing one selectman tonight, selectman Bongado, who fully intended to be here, except when he found out what the date of the meeting was. He's at his granddaughter's confirmation at seven o'clock, so it's proven that he didn't come to this meeting, he would have got shot. So with that, anybody else that wants to ask questions?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to know, I don't even know what Lakeville thinks about it. We haven't talked, I, we, the finance committee as far as, now we haven't talked, um, about this project, and I'd like to know what Lakeville thinks about it.
Well, I, I certainly can pipe in a bit, but the other two selectmen certainly can pipe in too. We have, we did an override last year on Lake, on Lake Free Town. We did an override for a million five. In our operating budget of this year, we put that million five into the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget.
You don't have a choice?
No, you do have a choice. You can, you can put it in the bank, it doesn't have to go to the schools.
Oh, you will-
If you did an override, you're going to get the money in, but it doesn't have-
It comes out of taxation somewhere.
It doesn't have to go to the schools.
Oh, no, I, I understand that part.
It can go in the bank. But, so, that somewhat addresses the schools, but I certainly want to make a statement on, on the budget and, and the process as we go forward. Certainly, Dr. Nash touched upon what she did on another school system. But I have to say that if, if we look at the numbers given to us as teacher steps and teacher raises, being five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, that's each and every year, because this is the, we, we'll call it the contractual obligation, but the contractual obligation is an obligation that was set by the school committee, not by anyone else. So that, it's obvious to me that the school committee is not up to the task if they, if they believe they've controlled expenses. Eighty-five percent of the expenses, they've not done a single thing about, except gave away the fund. Uh, so if, if we say we didn't fill certain positions, we haven't gone after the real contracts, which is eighty to eighty-five percent of the, of the pie. The steps and levels, uh, if we just took a step two, level one bachelor degree, we give a, a teacher a six-point-nine-two percent increase for twelve years, I think. So that, this isn't contractual, uh, what I call negotiations here, but if you're giving someone a six-point-nine-two percent raise, or you're, or you're giving raises in steps of five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, and if we end up going to a, we'll call it a town meeting, and there's layoffs, these, these raises are just beyond me. So it isn't, uh, so the contract that was signed basically tied the towns' hands financially to function. Uh, I was told by a school committee member that we had, I had two choices. I could either do an override for the money that's already spent, that is, the contracts were done without proper funding. So I had a choice of I could do an override or I could do layoffs. We chose in Lakeville to do an override. Uh, and, uh, you could just go back and see how we voted, if anyone cares to, you know, go back in the selectmen's meeting notes. But the third and correct choice would have been, don't spend the money that you don't have. And that was never an option that was ever given to us by the school committee. The options were, do an override, because we've already spent the money, or do layoffs. Well, those are both shitty choices. So the correct choice of don't spend the money was done by the school committee. So, uh, I've never asked for a layoff. Simply spend the money that you reallocate, which we all know is two and a half percent increase per year in Free Town. Mr. Sada took me to task the other night, rightfully so, and said, John, why are you starting at two and a half percent? That's the maximum you have available, why are you stopping at two and a half? Perhaps should have been started at, at less. But we say it's about the children, each and every one that voted, and the affirmative for the teacher contract basically could have doomed the school system if the, if the override vote didn't go through, which is certainly doomed the town's finances. Uh, so if we have a, if we're driven to a town, joint town meeting, if we say we don't want to fund the schools, because Free Town hasn't done a, uh, an override, and they can address how they're going to fund the schools, uh, but I feel that we could be laying off the departments that have suffered the most, whether I call it the DB, DPW, the library, the town employees, the union, non-union, the police and the fire. So that whatever we give to the schools over and above, uh, the two and a half, uh, mandate comes out of the hide of other town employees, and that's absolutely not, not fair. We have an absolute, uh, finite amount of money. Alls I've heard is when we bring these issues up at the school committees, we blame the state for unfunded mandates. Well, you gave us an unfunded mandate of, uh, raises that are greater than two and a half percent. We talk about contractual obligations, oh, we're held to, a fee to the fire because of contractual obligations. The school committee set the contractual obligations. And certainly when, when it was given, uh, we sat there and said, listen, you've given away, at the time, one-point-three million more than steps and, and raises, but if we look at this number, six hundred thousand for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, or more exactly, five hundred and eighty, somewhere thousand dollars. So that's part of, that's just my opinion. We have funded through an override last year, and we would fund, we would, our plan is to continue to fund the schools at an additional million five from what it would have been prior to the override.
To what, what figure would that be?
Oh, God, I don't, I don't have that exact number in front of me.
Who would it be?
I, I would say it would probably be close to-
The thirty-three-one-forty-five or the thirty-three-one?
Probably, I, I don't know if Scott can address that, but, but, uh, I don't know. I, I, I don't know that exact number.
Maybe Scott, yes.
Um, well, let's just address what we have here, first of all. Last year, we, we did an override in Lakeville, and we gave the schools one-point-five million dollars. Um, we funded our net school minimum of three forty, which we found out over the summer was the wrong figure. We overfunded it, two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars from Lakeville on top of that, because our, they were using the government, they're using the governor's numbers, but when the Department of Education came out, actually, our net school spending increase should have been a hundred-and-ten thousand, and Free Town was supposed to be a lot higher, but they didn't readjust that. But we did use that three forty to fund that portion of it. We gave them the one-point-six, one, one million, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand. And what's troubling here is that we're not mentioning in this budget right here that we gave them, and not this administration, because this, this administrators weren't here, but we gave them capital budget of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. A hundred-and-fifty came from, or a hundred-and-forty thousand came from Lakeville, and a hundred-and-ten came from Free Town. That was to go to a capital budget, not an operational budget, a capital budget. Well, that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand was added into this number to the beginning, because they didn't do a capital budget. They might have spent it on capital, but they didn't do a capital budget. They put it in the operational budget and spent capital out of it. Well, that's, this is already two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars overinflated from FY fourteen to begin with. So that has to be backed up. I understand the one-time money, and everybody here understands what the one-time money is, but when you take a budget and you go from X one year, and you go to Y the next year, the percentage change is the percentage change, it doesn't matter who's funding it. So I guess what we're led to believe here is that because the two towns would come up with two-point-five percent of it, that's the spending increase. That's not the spending increase. The spending increase is whatever you spent last year, whatever you propose to spend this year, the percentage change is the total spending increase, which is close to five percent. So we have to go from that premise from the beginning. This, this is just not, we, we got at least, this, let's, at least deal with Matt. Matt says that this is the percentage change increase. There's, there's six of us on the regional finance committee members, and I think one, two, probably four or five of us in the room tonight. We started working on this in July of two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and twelve, I'm sorry. And we said it, I always said that it had to be a three-tier approach. The towns had to do their share, the schools had to do their share, or, or the school committee should have to do their share of watching the budgets and cutting where they could cut it. And then we need, we need some concessions from the unions. So we did an override. Free Town came up with their portion, we came up with our portion, the towns did their share. We never saw, well, I guess we had three hundred thousand dollars in savings, so I guess we could say the school committee did some of that, but we never got any concessions from the unions. Everybody's just said, oh, we got the money for one year, we don't, we can, we can, don't have to worry about the next year and the year after. The problem I have here is that nine hundred thousand dollars is one-time money, and that's going to be put on the towns in FY sixteen, plus another four or five percent on top of that. There's no fiscal responsibility. So I don't see that, how we can fund this, I just don't see it. I mean, we're already two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, I, I know it's only two-hundred-and-fifty thousand on a three, thirty-three million dollar budget, but we're two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars over. You've already taken that money away from us, so the percentages are all wrong to begin with.
So Scott, are you saying that the thirty-three million, five nineteen, is just out of the question for you guys? Because, I mean-
It's pretty obvious.
It's pretty obvious that that's what you're saying, and-
In our budget, and I don't have it with me tonight, because I wish I did, um, we're taking the one-point-five million dollars. It's in our budget right now, and, and our numbers are, are okay right now. We don't know where it's going to end up, because it all could change tomorrow. We took another thirty-seven thousand dollars on top of that, based on the two and a half percent increase on the one-point-five, and giving that to the schools. And I believe we also came up with another, plus the three hundred thousand, I don't have the figures in front of me, to say, okay, let's see if we, if we actually did the net school spending increase, plus the one-point-five, plus the thirty-seven. It's still not going to be close to this figure.
It's not going to, in other words, between-
It's still not close to it.
You can't get to thirty-three-one-forty-five, no way. Not even to thirty-three-one-forty-five, right?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, I mean, I know that the schools are, if, if they're looking at the minimum funding, and they're going to do nine hundred thousand on the one-point-four million, you know, like, let's call it one-point-four million, that still leaves us seven hundred thousand, I don't think-
The bottom line here is that-
It's over, they've already taken, by taking that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, they've already taken money that we, we tried, I, I did a one-point-five million override, suggested a one-point-five million override for Lakeville, and we fought, we, we structured it such that we had some safety nets and we could get two years out of it. Unfortunately, they took two-hundred-and-fifty thousand out and threw it into this budget. They already took money that we had for this year and took it already. I don't know, I don't know, Paul, I don't know where, I don't know where exact numbers are.
It seems to me that the school committee is going to be voting on a thirty-three million, five nineteen. I don't know what's going to happen to them, but, you know, just to add to John's comments earlier, and then I'll let somebody else take it, is that, you know, if, if you have a, a, a budget item that's eighty-five to eighty-nine percent of the total budget, the only way you can control this is to control that particular line item. And how do you control that line item? You renegotiate contracts. If you don't do that, you will never get this thing under control, ever. Who's next?
I just want to add that we haven't talked about this either, but we, we've been at joint town meetings, and I never want to see another one, and that's why, that's why we're having this meeting, so we can start to iron out some of those things, so we don't go to a joint town meeting. I didn't see it, I don't see it happening, like, it's one of those things that we promised, each town promised that we would do the best we could and come up with the money that we can, but since the override went out last year, we've been just talking level budget. We have not talked minimum, uh, services, we just talked, that, that was our starting point, so, like, we're waiting to hear from you guys what your starting point is.
Actually, what I'm hearing is minimum net, so.
I, I don't have, no, I don't have minimum, I don't have level funding for last year. We actually have an increase, but we certainly don't have this much of a increase.
Okay, that, that, okay, so that's a first step, that's what I, that's part of the-
I can tell you, wait, no, from my perspective, getting what we got last, the school's going to get the same dollar amount as they got last year, from my perspective, on one selectman.
That would be a major, but if you look at that, that would be a major decrease. It actually would be a decrease in Lakeville.
I don't think it would be a major decrease, that's okay.
It would be a, it would be a major decrease for Lakeville.
What do you consider a major percentage increase?
Well, I wish Rita was here tonight, because she has all those figures, and I don't have the, look, here.
You go.
But it would be a major decrease, I know that.
I think that's it. Is that what you're going to do?
Yeah, this is, this is what we propose, but this is not, this is not the same thing, but, but this is exactly what we want, okay.
Can you give me a number?
First of all, what's, what's minimum net?
Uh, our minimum net is nine-eight-oh-eight-seven-seven-zero.
That's based on one of their figures out from the House, so we're, we're going to point of view, sure. At this point in time, Free Town's is seven-seven-oh-nine-five-eighty, and Lakeville's is nine-eight-oh-eight-seven-seven. That's based on House Two and the governor's budget, that could change. That's a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, seven-ninety-three, less for Free Town than what you gave as an actual last year.
Can you say that again? Can you say that again?
Yeah, you, at, your, last year you gave 7,838,373. That was your actual, and that was probably precipitated by the vote from Lakeville. So the difference between...
How much was last, last year?
7, 838,373 was your FY14 actual.
Now, due to the fact the schools and others went back and recalculated net school spending, and my determination was that since we exceeded net school spending, that as long as we exceeded the amount, that was really not appropriate.
Our net school spending last year and the budget that we passed at the town meeting was 7,531,865. And it was 840,000 dollars over net school spending. So if that net school spending requirement went up, then the additional net school spending was just netted against that.
Yes.
Okay? So what we gave the schools last year in net school spending, an additional net school spending, was 8,371,865.
Exactly.
Okay.
But your actual, but, exactly, but your net school spending was really 78,380.
Well, that's okay, it doesn't matter, it's immaterial.
Right.
Because if you look at the addition, that's all that counts.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so, what we're proposing with Lakeville, what we have in our budget right now is, our FY15 proposed net school spending is 9,808,770. We added the override of 1.5 million, we added 3750, I mean, 37,500, which is the 2.5% on the 1.5 million override. And right now, we have in our budget an additional 310,442 dollars.
In addition to what you just gave me?
Yes.
310, how much?
310,442 dollars.
442?
442.
Okay. So you're going to take those three things, that's going to be your, your over net school spending? Is that what you're saying?
In other words, what we're proposing, what's in our budget right now, and that doesn't mean that that's where we're going to end up, is we're actually going to spend, we're going to be 15.67% over net school spending, which is an increase from last year of 2.8%.
Hold on, that, the figures you just gave me is 1,847,942, right? Are you going to add, that's going to be above net school spending figure?
Oh, yeah, way above.
Yeah, that's what you're saying, that's going to be over the 9, the 9, 80877, correct? Okay, let me put that in there, 9, 808, 770.
And that's what we have right now, but you know how things change.
So you're coming up with about 11,656,712?
We haven't voted on it either.
Yeah, but you're just wrong.
Right now, it's, right now, it's in our, in our preliminary budget.
Okay.
So the selectmen haven't got together and voted on it, or the finance committee hasn't voted.
I'm just telling you that, what I'm, what, what plan I'm coming from.
Now, if we did that and you said, okay, yeah, that's great, we'll find our share.
I'm telling you what we, what Mike, what I'm going to do. I don't speak for anybody else on my board.
No, he won't ever speak for me. I won't allow him to speak.
This is speaks for itself. And I don't speak for you.
What is your, what is your plan then?
I just told you.
It's the same as we spent, as we spent last.
We're going to give the schools the same amount of money as we did last year.
Which is 8, 8,931,865.
We gave, we gave the school last year a total of 9,548,880. That includes the transportation costs, that includes the debt.
Right, the debt, yes.
Instead of looking at the local contributions, being...
You have to give one more time.
But your local contribution right now would be higher than, actually would be less than. Last year, your local contribution was 7,531,865, right?
No.
78, right?
No.
7,838,770.
I don't have it here.
That's what we gave in required net school spending and over net school spending.
No, okay, I understand that, I'm just asking, I've answered my own question, the top one.
It looks like preliminary, it looks like preliminary for Freetown in FY15, and then net school spending is 7,799,580. And we gave the exact same, and we don't, we don't talk transportation because transportation is an extra cost.
It doesn't matter, it's still part of the cost.
Yeah, but...
If I, if I used it last year and I can, and I use it this year, it still gives me the same cost.
But the transportation could come in higher and we have to pay that amount.
Yeah, it is, right.
We don't have any choice.
I understand.
So that's why, I don't even have the transportation, I have no idea what we paid transportation with me right now.
You want me to tell you? Oh, for last year, I can't tell you that. We paid 394,000.
We paid 549,968.
Just remember, Scott, when you do these computations, you pick up 58.69%.
No, I got it.
And we pick up 41.31%.
No, I understand. So in other words, if you gave them the exact same operational budget, not talking about transportation, not talking about debt because debt is, it is what it is, you'd be looking at, funding your minimum net budget right now, and the overage of net school spending would be 662,295, which would put you at 8.59% over net school spending.
Scott, I don't know what you're talking about. I just get through telling you that, what my, what I'd like to do is give the same dollar amount.
Same operational budget that you gave last year.
Same dollar amount.
8,371,000, that's what it comes up to.
8,371,865.
Well, 9,548,880.
Yeah, like, the transportation.
Yes, I can, I can use that figure, yes, I can. Because that's the bottom line.
It's all taxpayer money.
That's right, it's all taxpayer.
So it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, but if the transportation goes up, that's going to affect your net school minimum.
What?
If your transportation went up to 100,000, you're going to, you're going to deduct that from your net, net school spending, over net school spending.
Right, what I read is that, that's what I'm saying. That would be, I don't know, I don't, I...
This is me, this is me.
That would be a major decrease to the schools.
Yeah, but we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what transportation's going to be.
I agree.
All right.
There isn't any major decrease, we're talking about major decrease. I mean, what are you talking about?
You think transportation's going to go up a million dollars?
No, no, I...
I can't, I can't.
No, I'm saying if, if, any, if any level's funding, it's going to be a decrease to the schools. We both know that, right? Because they're, their contractual costs are going up. It would be. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's what it is.
Well, actually, what I'm hearing is that it's time for it to go the other way.
What's that?
Fiscal responsibility, it's time for it to go the other way. I mean, you know, to arbitrarily increase salaries, increase things without having any idea whatsoever where the funding's going to come from, I think is, is pretty, myself personally, I think is pretty ludicrous. I would like to have some idea if I was going to increase, increase funding, funding to some portion of it, that I'd have some idea where the funding was coming from. And that's not what's happened so far, it's just been year after year, it's been rubber stamp, year after year. It's just, it can't be supported, it's not, it's not the way to go for the future. And I think by talking about these numbers here, about the increases and what you're saying, all right, I don't disagree with you, I think I do agree with you because now you're in a position that we were in 15 years ago when I first got on the finance committee, we were just scraping every year, and that was just awful. Because then, at that point, we were still 100% responsible for the elementary school at that particular time, too. And that was a real budget buster for us back then. I mean, back then, the entire budget for the school system was, was a little over, I believe, was a little over 7,000 dollars. And we're at 33 million. So there's been a massive increase along the way.
Do you want to make sure that you separate out, unlike many regions? Regions, regions are entities of themselves, so you include workers' comp and health insurance. That is not the case in public school districts in the North Region. So you need to, let's, if we want to separate what actually goes to education, all those costs, which is about 4 million dollars in health insurance, get pulled out of your budget. It doesn't go to direct services for staff or anything else. So all I'm saying is when you compare to a public school that is non-region, those costs are not in there, they're on the town side, but that doesn't mean it's the same money, it still comes.
I understand, I understand, it's the same money and the numbers are a lot less.
But just the total number, when you say it escalates, that cost escalates.
If you stop looking at it percentualized, you're going to find out that the numbers are almost exact. And when you look on a state website, it's the same thing. It's sort of like when you look on a state website, and you list, every school in the state is listed, and they list, this is a website for recruiting teachers, and they, they have a number of students per teacher. And Freetown is 13. It just struck me as, it was something I looked up, it just struck me as...
So look in my handout that I gave you, you'll see the real size is current and next year. I don't think there's any class of 13.
I'm not saying, I'm saying on the state website, they say that they have real numbers.
The state doesn't average, it's very different.
Does the state, does the state average take into consideration the spend kids that have one-on-one teachers? Is that...
It depends on how that's reported. I'm not sure that that is included.
It couldn't, it may not be.
It generally includes all of your professional staff, total professional staff, not just teaching staff, divided. So it'd be a liberty culture.
Actually, I have one, I have one other question quickly. At the end of last year, fiscal last year, the E and D account was 421,000 dollars, that's what I was told anyway. And you guys have 1.1 million in there now, let them know where you got the money.
Now, the E and D account went from, it went up about 200,000 last year, it was, it was almost nine and it went to about 110,000.
Can we sing to Bon Jovi? Sorry.
It went from a, it went from a figure slightly less than nine...
I'm living on a prayer right now.
...to 1.1 million. So it did go up a couple of hundred thousand. It's average, the average over the last 10 years has been about, has been 800,000. That's why we weren't hesitant to put forward the 300,000 because we're, the 800,000 remaining still puts it within the average of the last 10 years.
All right, so, just, just, we didn't finish this equation here. If Lakeville, if, if, we go forward and we fund, and everybody approves in Lakeville what we have in the budget right now, that would cause an increase in Freetown's budget of 545,796 dollars.
Well, how, how do you know that, Scott?
Just, just by...
Centimeters.
Centimeters.
Wait a second, Scott, wait a second.
I'm not saying that that's what's going to happen.
Wait, wait a second, Scott. The figures you gave me before, you're saying that you're going to give 11,656,712, correct?
I don't have a calculator in front of me.
Well, that's what, the figures you gave me, I added them up, okay?
Let me give you them all, 9, 9,808,770, because that's net school minimum.
Right. And what's our net school minimum?
Your net school minimum is 7,709,580.
Okay.
That's proposed right now, that's not actually...
Well, I mean, that's the best we can get right now, because that's what the figures are.
Right.
Okay. And then you added...
I'm adding my 1.5 million dollar override.
Yeah.
And I'm adding 7, 37,500.
Yeah.
And my 2.5% on the 1.5 million dollar override.
That's fine, yeah.
And then I'm adding 310,442 dollars.
You, you're throwing in just a good measure.
That's 1,847,770.
So that 1,847,942, you add them together, that's 11,656,712.
Sounds, sounds all right.
Okay.
That would spin off, require...
What would that require us to do?
That would require you to come up with another 545,796 dollars.
Over what, over the, over the 770?
Over the, over the, no, that's over the 8,371,000.
I think you're wrong.
875 from Lakeville.
I think you're wrong.
This is, this is Rita's now.
I think Rita's wrong. Because you can't do it the way you're doing it. Either Rita's wrong or my work is wrong, and I don't think my work is wrong. Could be, and I'll go back and double-check it for the fifth time.
But none of this, none of this is counting our regional transportation, none of this is...
That's fine, I understand it. But that all plays a part in it. That all plays a part in the bottom line.
But I think that's, he's trying to answer your question on a substantial decrease. I mean, if you're saying what you're, you're proposing and what, the 585, that's your substantial decrease to the school.
I guess if you said, if you, if you said to us, there's no way we're going to come up with 545,750, we're going to stick with the 8,371,000, and we'd have to back out our portion of what we already have in our budget, and our number would come down substantially. It wouldn't come down, it wouldn't come down by, it would come down 800,000.
It went up substantially last year, did it, huh?
Our budget, yeah, we passed it over.
We divided it in two years, half the one year and half the other year, and they still got an increase.
The increases haven't stopped.
I, I, it's never, ever, ever been a decrease in a school budget, ever.
I'm on your, I'm on your side, I just...
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not the case.
The only thing that decreases is the student population.
And actually, the percentages of students from, from town to town does vary.
But I think, I think, I don't know, you're the best, I don't know what the viewpoint of all of us selectmen are, but we passed a 1.5 million dollar override because the taxpayers said this is what we want. So it would be irresponsible to not say, we're going to give that money to the schools again, in my opinion.
So although Lisa may dislike combined town meetings, we would only, if you will, match our percentage of what Freetown was going to put in, although Paul is trying to get to our number versus his number, if, if you do what Paul is indicating, it would be a substantial reduction, perhaps. And, and we would have a two-town meeting, and the people that suffer may be people that suffer that you don't want to suffer. Depends the makeup of that town meeting.
True, and that's why you have a number in mind.
Well, our, our number...
There's a number in mind.
Fortunately enough, we funded through, we funded through an override, so if you will, our job, we left to the taxpayer, whether we should have or should not have, I would certainly not disagree that the Freetown select group, the three voted, obviously, you can't come up with the operational money, I don't think, unless you have a lot of money in the bank. So I guess if it's a two-town meeting, it's a two-town meeting. I'm not going to try to sway you into a bigger number because the school committee, obviously, whatever that number is, they will spend every nickel of it in the next negotiations, unlike what Dr. Nass suggests of, why don't you bring in a proper attorney? Why don't you change the steps and levels over a longer period of less percentage? I'll put words in her mouth, she didn't say that. But she, she inferred that. So if it's a, if it's a two-town meeting, what a hell of a mess that's going to be. But I'm not going to suggest you come up with a greater amount of money. When is the line going to be drawn in the sand?
What makes you think that what we're going to give is going to, going to match what you have, what you're throwing in?
Well, because it doesn't make what difference you do this year, you also have the year after. We still have the 1.5 override, so unless you're coming up...
Are you suggesting that we should have an override?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, absolutely not. You folks do what you want to, and we're going to match that number. We're going to match our percentage of that number. I can't fault you for drawing that line in the sand. Maybe I commend you for doing it.
So are you saying you're waiting for our number to see if you're coming?
Oh, much, much so, because our number is much higher than our.
Well, our number's...
Our number's much higher than what you would do.
And that's kind of what I was saying, I said, you guys are at one number, or at a number, or somewhere in the middle, the two shall meet, hopefully.
We'll match you.
Or not.
So you want to match our number?
Sure, because it's going to be lower than ours.
But it sounds like you guys got a lot more money dispatched.
We do, the balance is going in the damn bank.
There you go. Are you speaking for the, for the Lakeville Select Board, sir?
No, they can pipe in themselves.
Oh, so this is your opinion? I just want to clarify, are you, are you speaking for the Select Board right now?
Never said anyone else's.
What do you think? Oh, okay. What do you think?
I want to make, I want to clarify it.
It's my comment. They can speak up to their comment, and you know exactly where I'm coming from.
But you said we, sir, you said we.
We? Let me clarify.
I just want to...
Perhaps all of us, perhaps all of us. You guys haven't controlled the cost, so don't get on my butt.
We haven't controlled the cost?
We haven't controlled the cost?
You haven't controlled the cost.
Let's back up the bus here. The contracts don't expire until next year.
Wait, you signed the last contract.
Wait, wait, wait.
You signed the last contract.
Yeah, and there was members of the Board of Selectmen sitting on the negotiating committee, so let's not forget that, okay? And let's back up the bus here, okay? We have not overspent our budget this year. That was the mandate we got from the regional FinCom to control spending. We've done everything we can to control spending. We're actually budgeting extra money for contract negotiations next year, and you know what? They're not going to be pretty, and a lot of people are going to be pissed off at the school committee, okay? I don't have a crystal ball to predict, like you, that we're going to give away the store again next year, okay? We've done everything we've can, including bringing in consultants to help reduce health insurance costs, okay? We have not filled positions that are needed, and you know who's suffering? The children. The children of Freetown and Lakeville are suffering, okay? We've done everything we can, so don't give me that attitude that we go through this every year, that you're going to cut us the net school spending.
How many years? How many years, Steve, I'm telling you?
Fifty years.
Every year.
Whoever voted for the last contract perhaps should just step down.
This is very helpful for me to understand where you folks are at. I agree that the override money was a mandate of the people, so to speak, from Lakeville to allocate those funds to the schools. I haven't had a conversation with Scott or John about the budget, in particular relative to the schools. I was sick at the last Selectman's meeting, or the previous one. I don't know what the 310K is for in addition, but, I mean, we can all, as a group, work on these numbers and figure out what it is. But it's helpful to know what your perspective is. I certainly appreciate the information, because at some point, we have to reconcile and kind of try to land it on the same spot. I do tend to agree with John in the sense that I'm not necessarily afraid of the two-town town meeting. I think it would be better to avoid it, but at some point, we can only do what we can do, and if the townspeople, the voters, need to make those decisions, then the voters need to make those decisions. We can only try to do the best we can with what we're given.
Would you want to comment? Because I think the figures that Scott is using are flawed. That's why I feel comfortable with saying that my perspective is that we will give the same as we gave last year, because I certainly think, unless I've got something radically wrong with my figures, it will meet the needs of the school department.
I give, I don't know. I didn't see his figures, so...
No, she hasn't seen them, because I worked on them all day today.
You mean the, the extra money that we push you up?
No, I mean my figures compared to yours. The bottom lines don't match up, so I don't know what you're doing, relying on somebody else. I know what I do. So I'm going to go back and double check my figures.
Well, maybe the chair and the chair should sit down at some point and go over their numbers.
I just know what our numbers would push your numbers to be.
Well, it's, I think what he's saying is you guys might not be working off the same bottom line figure, so if you guys agree that these are the numbers we're going to work with, then, you know what I'm saying? Otherwise, they're always going to be flawed.
Yeah, we're not, we're not adding the same numbers.
Yeah, right, exactly. So if you guys compare those notes, that would be great. And then let me in on it, because...
I suppose to go off the bottom line, it'll be bad.
I had some questions, if everyone's... The floor's open. There were questions about cost controls and vetting of things. Professional development, you said you're increasing your professional development line. I know in the past, knowing some teachers personally, that they've gone to the same professional development class more than once or twice. I've known, I know it's happened in the high school. Just want to make sure things like that are being vetted before, where taking teachers out, paying for substitutes, having...
You had a great deal of expense in substitutes last year, because the need was to pull people out of class, and that was determined based on where you were and what the initiatives were. It's a, it's a double-edged sword. Either you pull them out of class, which teachers typically don't want, or you pay them to come in after-school hours, and sometimes you'll get people, and other times you won't. So that may be part of it. Last year, you had a transition in assistant superintendent. The overview of professional development falls under the directive of the assistant superintendent of schools. Building-based oversight, principals initially approve and recommend that, you had transition in that. So I can't answer your question, because I wasn't here, other than that's the way it goes. Teachers put in for professional development, it's approved by principals, and I guess...
So there's no way to make sure that people are not taking the same class over and over that?
Oh, absolutely. All I'm saying is you had a transition in the people who were there in the positions.
No, I understand things happen. I just want to make sure they're not happening.
So therefore, your high school principal changed, I think you were on your third one in four years. So certainly, that kind of oversight could have slipped through if the next principal didn't see that or didn't know that. But certainly, we...
But knowing that is, it's an important part of cash, controlling your budget.
Absolutely, it's not... Oh, absolutely. It's a, it's a piece of your budget, it's not the most important piece of your budget.
No.
PD, a law of the tuition reimbursement, which is a, which is a contractual obligation.
But seeing as most of the important parts of the budget are contractual, you need to operate on the premise that you need to control what you can control. So on that line, I know there was a lot of the technology money that hasn't been spent yet. Just looking at your monthly budget numbers on your budget line?
It hasn't, it hasn't actually been spent, and the cash has been, you know, paid. It's actually been encumbered in the sense that, you know, we did use the state contracts, the work is under contract, we haven't paid for it yet, because it's not complete.
Okay, that was my question, right?
It is committed, however.
Okay. Another question I had was our special ed line, keeps climbing, climbing, which everyone understands the need for, that's been around the school system for a while. I want to know how those teachers are being scheduled, because like I said, I know of a lot of cases where it's one-on-one, and sometimes that's unnecessary, sometimes the child has disabilities that have that, but I know there's cases of people having one student and getting a full paycheck for working.
I'm talking two different things. That tuitions are for out-of-district, and then what you're talking about, I believe, is, is the opposite of...
Yeah.
And that's, that's defined by an IEP.
Okay.
So if, if students are in substantially separate programs, you could very well see, as a result of an IEP, six adults and three or four or five students, because every student in accordance with his or her IEP requires that. We actually met last week, I met with the Director of Student Services and all of the principals to look at and examine our staffing for next year, our needs. So some of our staff move up with students, others we're redesigning and moving them because of the need somewhere else. And what does that, you know, what's the net to us? Most of your powers are one-on-ones, meaning they're, are one-on-tos, meaning they're either assigned to an individual student because of their need. The cost that you save is that, generally, that's a student who we call someone who is extremely disabled, but we're able to either provide a substantially separate program for them, or to mainstream them with a one-on-one. So in essence, saving the cost for transportation and sending a student to an out-of-district.
But that has been weighed, the cost of...
Oh, absolutely. It's going to, between, remember, you're spending 535,000, if not more, in transportation right now, in sped transportation. So that cost in and of itself. We looked at outsourcing that, and our closest bid was 650,000, and that would have been broken roots. And we looked at trying to do that. Your spend, your drivers are not in union, so there's no, no union employees, so it's a little different. But the closest that we got to trying to outsource was about a $100,000 swing of difference. So, and we're still looking at that, but it won't happen, you know, for next year.
And text and supplies is my last one. I'm not familiar with the way you guys go through when you have to do your purchasing. So are you reevaluating, you know, how you're purchasing? You're purchasing used?
The point ranking was that they didn't purchase.
Excuse me, I can't hear her answer. Gentlemen? I can't hear her answer.
The issue was, particularly at the high school, was about $48,000, that's high school of 121, they did not make purchases. And so we're really looking at textbooks that either were out of date now, so you couldn't even get them if you were buying a replacement. And so you really should have a cycle for textbooks, you know, an adoption cycle that you put in your budget. There really wasn't one, so we were just looking at trying to address the areas that have been identified as immediate needs. In the future, you need to look at this as an ongoing cost.
Well, that's another part of the technology.
We do use the tech collaborative as a cooperative purchaser. They have about, depending on the particular issue anyway, from 20 to about 35 districts, so they get better prices. We also match that against the state bid list. So we're trying to get the best price we can get.
I just didn't know if there was specific parameters, or if someone could say, go on Amazon and buy a ton of used books for their students if they wanted to.
Some of it are consumables, they're workbooks, so there's a yearly cost to that. Your math program is a consumable.
Now, when are those going to be switched over to technology-based?
Unless we purchase that as a renewal, you know, as a...
Yeah, yeah.
And even that, there's a yearly cost to the renewal individually.
Get licensed, etc.
Not, not just a district license, it's an actual student license, so every year you're paying anywhere from $14 to $22 per student when you do an ebook.
I just didn't know when we're going to realize any of the savings from moving over to the technology.
You don't have the hardware yet to support some of that, that's one of the things.
When is the implement, do you have a timeline on implementation?
We have a plan that we're working on and developing. We actually have a vendor coming in to give us some quotes. The administrative team and the Director of Technology and I have been, and the Director of Finance, working on a capital plan for the next three to five years to address that. But first, it's to identify what are our needs? What do we currently have? We're doing a needs assessment. And what's the, the definition of what we believe a smart classroom, if you will, should look like, you know? And then to address that, obviously, over the next few years, that will be something that will be handed off to the person who comes in.
Because I know the Finance Committee, as I'm a member of the Finance Committee, those are things we, we'd love to get updates on. Those let us know where you're going, what you're heading, what you're looking at, so it makes more sense if we can put things in perspective.
We have not developed the capital plan for technology, because we needed to take a step back and really do a better audit and have a better conversation around what did we believe we needed to have in our buildings, what should it look like? And so we brought in some vendors to show us that, and now we're starting to bring in someone to do an audit of each of the schools. So we stepped back from that. I would envision that whoever comes in as, you know, the person who follows me will continue that work. And you'll see that coming forward, maybe as a capital plan over the next, next budget cycle.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to just understand a few things from my own selectmen a little bit more, because I, it might just be me, but I thought I heard some mixed messages. And what I, what I mean by that is, I heard that Lakeville should be supporting, at least to the extent that we did an override last year, but then I, I think I also heard, you know, some, some feelers being put out there to see if Freetown wants to go a different path, so that Lakeville can attach themselves to that. And that path seems to have more to do with tying the school committee to a whipping post and, and giving us a good beating over the last contract. And I, I'd like to remind you folks that when we went through the entire last year, and Scott did a lot of work on this, the last year of the contract was well-known, good or bad, like it or not. It was known that it was coming. The townspeople in Lakeville had ample time to inform themselves of what that meant. And the selectmen also as well had the opportunity to approve or not approve the, you know, the override to go to ballot. That all happened, and the town made a decision. And to put out feelers that maybe Freetown wants to take a different path, and this is a way to pull back some of that money now, if that's what I was hearing, I think runs counter to what the town, how the town just spoke. I mean, you know, a few years ago, though it was by a different method, when, when the, you know, the townspeople turned away Cisco and took a different path for the character of the town, but maybe not for tax revenues, I didn't, I didn't see lots of backdoor efforts and begging and grovelling and attempts to, you know, to hold people to account for that. We, it happened, we moved on. So I'm, I'm just not understanding where, where my own selectmen are at this point.
We would be committed, obviously, to the million-five override being put into the school budget. It's unfortunate that, we'll call Paul and Scott need to come to the meeting of the minds of the figures. If, if what Scott is saying is that Freetown would be giving 500,000 dollars less than we would be doing if we went through with the Lakeville's suggestion, okay?
Yes, I understand that.
If, if that is in fact true, and we don't know if that's true, so...
Correct.
So whatever, when, when Paul is asking us, what are you doing, I think Scott gave him the number, which is, which is a big number. I don't object to that. If in fact, Freetown doesn't come up with that, then we'll follow their lead.
You're assuming that we're not going to...
Right, right.
You don't even have our numberism. I, I, I think that the...
Right.
I don't think the figures are right. In other words, I don't think the computation is right.
Right. Then, then that should be resolved in a matter of a few days, I would think. But that should just be resolved in a few days. The number is whatever it is, and if we've come up with a greater number, then we would follow Freetown's lead. If, if they match our number, then we don't object. We absolutely don't object. The taxpayers said we want to vote a million-five for the schools, because I'm concerned it can stay in there to the council. We would not pull it back. It's only be dictated in the matching percentages, that's all.
Okay, thank you. That wasn't clear to me. And one, one last thing. We, we have a negotiation coming up, and I just want to throw out there, though you may well be right, and you may be able to look at past practice and, and all, we haven't had that negotiation yet, so you completely prejudged us earlier and said that we would, not might, not might or could or whatever, give away the farm. We'll, we'll try our best, and if you want to give me an "I told you so" about a year from now, if I happen to still be on the committee, be my guest. But to say, you know, flat out that we will give away the farm in the next round of negotiations was a little bit uncharitable, along with some floundering language that you threw in there, but that might have been a split. We didn't give a you-know-what kind of deal to your intention.
The people that were on and voted in the affirmative of the last contract should be taken to task. It was an unfundable amount with two choices, do an override or do a layoff. That was the choice that was given to me by the school committee. Those are unacceptable. You should raise the money first and do your overrides if you need to. You shouldn't spend the money first. So anyone that signed that last contract absolutely should be accountable. If those people are still on the school committee, if they're changing their ways, fine. If not, I think they should step back. That's what I'm saying. Whoever signed the last contract that's still on the school committee, if they're not changing their ways, they should step back, perhaps. So I won't mix the words there. If you were not on that last signing committee, then fine. I don't know if you were or you weren't. I don't know if you were or you weren't.
I was on the committee.
Then I think it's a problem. You signed, you signed $582,000 worth. And that's a problem. It's a problem for the towns.
I do not believe that we signed a contract that mandated an override. When Lakeville regionalized, we set ourselves on the path of an override. When we kicked businesses like Cisco to the curb likewise, there's a lot of moving parts here. It wasn't solely that contract, although the last year of that contract, not personally happy with myself. And we've got an opportunity this coming year to take another crack at it, and we'll see how that goes. But Lakeville is a bit more of a complicated pie than the one-trick pony that you set it up that the school committee has torpedoed the town. It's, that's just not true. And it shouldn't come through that way over cable land and in this meeting.
Well, once again, the percentages given out by the last committee are unfundable without the override. If you don't think that to be the case, then I'm happy to take a look. I'm happy to take a look at the math. Happy to take a look at the math.
John, you just said that 1.5 million.
For the override.
Right. But then Scott threw in another 147, 148, 348,000.
I don't know what that number is. I don't know what that number is.
He said 47, 37,500.
Aaron said we didn't look at it.
Another 310,442.
37,5 is the two and a half on the 1.5 million.
Why would you be throwing at it? What's the purpose?
I haven't talked about it.
We haven't gone over it.
So in other words, these are his...
Well, forget the 37. It's 307,000. It's a problem.
What, 310,442? What's that?
Right. I have no idea. No idea.
That's what's in our budget right now.
What's the point? The override election, what were the numbers in that? Did I correct and assume that it only passed by 80 votes?
I think you're correct. I think it was somewhere between 80 and maybe 92 votes or something.
So we're not talking about an override, an overwhelming mandate from the taxpayers.
If it had failed by one vote, would you have been coming to us saying, "Boy, we really feel bad. It should have passed"?
I wouldn't be coming to you at all because it's not my problem.
Well, again, then why are you bringing it up at all? It passed.
Again, I'm just saying.
But why, why are you...
The air is...
Why are you characterizing the decision of the town if you're not willing to look at it the other way?
I can look at it both ways.
It passed.
But it doesn't have anything to do with me. The only point that I was trying to make was it did not pass by an overwhelming margin. Only 50% of the people were in favor.
Going into that override...
Because those were the 50% of the people probably that were informed about what was going on as far as the schools and as far as the percentages.
I think you're speculating where you can't. And going into that override, there was nobody sitting at this table that thought it was going to pass. Everybody in Freetown was hoping it wasn't going to pass. And practically nobody in Lakeville thought it was going to pass. So the fact that it passed or didn't pass, I think, is immaterial. Maybe, you know, two-thirds of overrides fail. And maybe the fact that it even passed at all is somewhat remarkable. So I really don't understand what you're talking about.
And I agree with you. I think that was remarkable.
I don't understand the relevancy, and I'd like to just move away from it.
I agree, because I don't think finger-pointing and turning back the clock is going to get us anywhere.
Don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to finger-point. I'm just bringing up a point. I was just bringing up a point.
All right. If there's nothing more productive for tonight, Smitty, can we adjourn? Anybody want a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, is the Lakeville FinCom, are we going to get together with Lakeville? I think that would be cool for us to get together and...
I don't want to cut it.
And I think we should wait till we get the numbers from Paul.
Get those numbers in.
So we know exactly what we're talking about.
Have you rolled them this yet?
I have.
I apparently have the confused wrong members. Can I just say one thing before we go? I think we've all been beating the drum here of what these steps and levels are in these contracts. And for the time I've served on this board and the people I'm sitting around the table with, this has been something we've thought about and looked at. And I hope that you're hearing it loud and clear that the town just cannot support these pay raises and cannot bring back. We haven't done it in early towns. And this is a real struggle to fight, and this is where the issue becomes. And I hope that's come across loud and clear, at least to me tonight. And I hope it has to members of the school committee when they go to negotiations. And I hope when this is played on the air and reported in the paper that that is emphasized. And so that people know this is coming. This shouldn't be a surprise to anybody when we enter those contract negotiations. We've entered a point of something we just simply can't do. And we've had to cut it in every other town. And I think it's time we take a good hard look at that at the school committee.
Dr. Nash, if you want to discuss this.
So, just in closing, for me, sitting on this side certainly, I understand the issue. There's only so much money to go around every year. Believe me, I sat in Hannover and cut for six of my seven years as superintendent of schools. And it gets to a point where you eventually get into the classroom. I was able to work magic, if you will, with reorganization and restructuring contracts. Let me just say something in defense of teachers. Contracts are structured this way for teachers for one simple reason. They do not front-load them. So typically, coming in, they start at a very low salary. And over the course of the 12 years, the steps of 13 or 14, they get to where MTA would suggest to you is where they belong. And that's where they should have started. So that's how, that's part of their mindset and the way they look at this. Given that, remember that many unions have other ways of getting increases. We do not benefit from some of the other increases that other unions have as teachers. I'm not arguing with you that, you know, steps are something that maybe need to be looked at. But it's a recognition that exists in almost every contract in the state of Massachusetts except for those that have restructured those. Even with restructuring, there's a cost to doing that. And the savings is not as great as you would think. For the almost similar amount of employees in Hannover, we saved $150,000 per year by flattening out the steps to a flat 3% plus COLA, whatever that COLA is. So, you know, in defense of that, it's the way that has existed for years. It's the way unions negotiate. So it's not just in Freetown/Lakeville, not just in Hannover where I came from. It's the way it exists across the state. And in many instances, in some areas, teachers would start at higher rate of pay than typical. The other elephant in the room is the insurance and the percentage of insurance. And although that doesn't equate anywhere to salary increases because we're a service industry, as towns are, we have, we deliver a service and we need people to do that. You can certainly cut budgets. From my perspective, the sooner I know, the last thing that I would like to do is to go to a joint town meeting. I don't think it serves any purpose. And the obligations that I have as a superintendent to meet contracts and deadlines require that I would then start creating some, put some things in play that may or may not happen prior to your town meeting on June 2nd. So that's the only thing that I would say. I would much rather at least know what it is, whatever that number is, before that time so that I have ample opportunity to make good decisions with my administrative team about what has to be done. So I hope that we could, you know, obviously, this is a good meeting, and I know where people are. They're at different places. But going forward, the sooner that, at least from my perspective as superintendent, and I can't speak for the school committee, that I have a knowledge and that Fred and I know what the number is, that there's some agreement on, then the better we can prepare for what that is going to look like and give that information to all stakeholders. Members of our union as well as the parents in other communities. That's the only thing I would say. But thank you for your...
Chairman Nogiro wanted to say something.
I just wanted to say in closing that if you take a look at the custodial contract, which we renegotiated, that contract has been brought with the cost under control. The custodians, who do a great service in the maintenance workers, have given up quite a bit, you know? So, I mean, to Mr. Davenport's point and stuff, you know, please don't predict what next year's going to bring. So, thank you.
Jay, did you have something?
Anybody else? That's it?
I have one more. I just want to make sure we're all committed to transparency whenever possible. I know the best thing you can do is work with the finance committees and let us know where everything is and where it's going. You know, if you're having big increases or if you're having lines that are changing drastically, we like to know as much advance as possible. I mean, we like to know where things are heading. It just helps the whole process along.
That's a very good point. And I would expect that Mr. Bacon keep both towns informed at the same level. And certainly, I asked for his help today. He was very cooperative. And it's really, it's nice to deal with Fred and also the superintendent. With that, I will add, one more. This is it. Go ahead. I want to get out of here.
No, as soon as, as soon as I get some solid figures from the Selectmen, I will give you a call. And we'll try to get a joint meeting going for the finance raises.
Sounds good.
And you can get some solid numbers on your end. And we'll have a joint meeting. Is that all right?
Great, perfect.
Selectman Pacheco, a motion?
Some vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're closed.
Motion to adjourn the regional school committee.
We still have that.
All in favor?